It is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have had some issues with these microphones during our work sessions, so hopefully they won't act up during the meeting. But if you have cell phones with you, please turn them on airplane mode or silent so they don't disrupt the meeting. And our first order, welcome everybody, and second, please join me in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'm going to start with introductions. I'm Lisa Whalen, I'm the mayor, and to my left are council members Kathleen Refkin, Ann McGregor, Peter Vickery, and Claudia Lacy. And then we have staff present this evening. We have our city engineer with WSB, Allison Folsky. We have our director of administration, Ally Palfus. And then we have our public works director, Gary Peters. And then to my right are Brian Grimm, who is our finance director, David Abel, who is our community development director, and then Sarah Sensala, who is our legal expert attorney. Thank you. And then last but certainly not least, we have our public safety director, Paul Falls. So with that, I don't have any changes to the agenda or additions, so is there a motion to approve as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. So we're going to start out with special presentations. We have our second quarter financial update, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Grimm.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. And I'll keep this pretty brief because you probably saw in the packet things are trending where they should be for the midpoint of the year. Couple of the highlights in the memo, we are, revenues for the general fund are about forty-three, forty-four percent, which is pretty much where they are at the end of June. We didn't even get some additional tax money in in early July as well as some additional building permit revenue. So I think we're actually now even in early July closer to fifty percent. Now we're a little over, so that's good there. And then on the expenditure side, we're right at about fifty percent, which is, which is good. I think I noted, you know, we were a little better than last year, but we hadn't paid the Hennepin County Assessor bill yet, which will be our last payment. We'll have to make sure the Hennepin County Assessor, seeing they're taking on that, services through their countywide levy, so we're sitting pretty well there. Otherwise, yeah, I guess it's attached on pages four through, I think, fourteen of the packet. I don't know if anyone has any questions on either the revenue expenditure, cash and investments report, but I think just the regular quarterly update. And we'll obviously be getting into our budget discussions in August here again as far as looking ahead to 2025. And I think this sets the tone, or at least the groundwork for the initial discussion, that everything seems to be tracking pretty well in 2024 so far.
So with all the rain for the bills that just went out for water, are those trending substantially lower than we were anticipating for the second quarter?
I mean, as far, and third quarter is usually the main, obviously, quarter, the highest revenue quarter for the water usage. So second quarter usually isn't, I think it didn't, it's not too much different than previous years because usually that's, you know, April, May, and June. I know now that we're in July and we've actually had a couple ninety-degree days or close to, you know, people might be starting to think about, hopefully not watering yet, you know, it's still been pretty wet, but, but we'll know more, I guess, with the third quarter September billing right now.
So the water billing is pretty much what it was last year?
Yeah, pretty similar, yeah. It may be slightly lower because some people last year, you know, I think, might have done a little watering in June or whatever. But it's not too far off of last year's, you know, base or whatever, or year-to-year comparison, so.
It seems like the insurance costs pretty much across the board are jumping pretty quickly. Are you factoring that in for next year, or a big increase next year?
Trying, yeah, to build that in as far as you're looking at, even, yeah, whether it's health property, workers comp, all those type of insurances. Yeah, we'll definitely be looking at for the 2025 budget. I mean, one of the nice things we've had a pretty good, you know, what do you want to say? No accidents really in the workplace for like workers comp. Or, you know, some things we're doing is what we can to mitigate those type of expenditures. But some of it is just, you know, market-driven that, and those type of costs, you know, whether it's inflationary, market-driven, are continuing to go up, so.
Okay.
Anything?
Anything else?
Other questions, or?
No, thank you.
All right.
So next we move on to persons to be heard. We have Carrie Meyer, who is here, and you have questions on your certificate of occupancy.
Yes, I do.
So Carrie, Ms. Myers, I should say, you have to state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes to address the council, and we don't take any action tonight. I, so go ahead, thank you.
Thank you, my name is Carrie Meyer. I address is nine two-two-nine Moss Drive in the lovely City of Minnetrista. Thank you for allowing me to speak. So very simply, we moved into our house on the twenty-fourth of April, 2021. Temporary certificate of occupancy was issued on April nineteenth. We still have a temporary certificate of occupancy. The reason being that we have an out-of-compliance grade on either side of our house. When we moved in, there was nothing but dirt, okay? The builder put in irrigation, mulch, and sod. And now we still have a temporary certificate of occupancy, and I have had no response from the city, which we started with in January of 2022. And moving forward, I wanted to reference the city ordinance. So five hundred point six one assurance of completion and maintenance of improvements, escrow deposits for lot improvements. We have a five thousand dollar escrow on this lot. All required lot improvements for which escrow monies have been accepted by the planning department at the time of issuance of certificate of occupancy will be installed with a period of nine months, which would end up being twenty-second of January, 2022, from the date of deposit. In the event that the lot improvements have not been properly installed at the end of the time period, the planning department, planning department, will give two weeks' written notice to the escrower, and that should have happened on February fifth of 2022, requiring the escrower to install the same. And in the event that the same are not installed properly, the planning department will request the city council to proceed with the work. I began with this again on nineteenth of May, and both the City of Minnetrista and GMS, and I'm sorry, but that's who it is, responded that they would either install no-maintenance vegetation on the slopes, they would lower the grade on both corners, which is what should have happened in the first place, or they would extend the already mulched areas. Apparently being unfamiliar with the laws of gravity, the mulch would simply slide down the slope. So we agreed to the installation of no-maintenance vegetation on the twenty-third of May, 2023. Last email we received from either the City of Minnetrista or GMS was August of 2023. I began this again with Mr. Olson on April twenty-fifth, 2024. I submitted a bid since no bid was submitted. Quadriga, who is now who GMS has become, countered on the twenty-seventh of June by saying, no, that's too much money. Unsurprising since you have to remove the sod, remove the irrigation, remove the mulch. So I said, that's fine, please send a contractor out to do this. I've had no response since then. I sent a certified letter on the twenty-eighth of June, sent a final email requesting an alternate bid on the fifth of July. Two weeks' notice was on Friday. I've heard from neither the City of Minnetrista nor Quadriga. So here I am before the city council to ask that this escrow at least be released using the bid that I have, or apparently according to ordinance, I defer to you, the planning department, who to my mind should have followed up on this to begin with, because that's what the ordinance requires, should put out a bid for this work.
Okay, so maybe I'm going to refer this to Sarah.
Yes, please.
Because I think, I believe there's been issues in your neighborhood with the same, yeah, just a couple, with the same builder. And maybe I think another property owner somehow remediated what, Sarah, what happened and how did they fix this?
Sure. I've got you.
Oh, sorry.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we had a similar issue with another property in this same neighborhood, same builder. And the property owner did hire an attorney, and the attorney wanted the city to release the five thousand dollar escrow. And the way we handled that was, I mean, this money actually belongs to the builder, and so the city doesn't want to just release it to someone else.
Yeah.
So they obtained a court order, and the city actually stipulated that if the court ordered the money to be given to the property owner, that the city would go along with it and release that to the property owner. And so the city stipulated to that, was not a part of the proceeding. And I think they were able to get that court order, to get it released over to the property owner, and then the city was able to follow suit and take care of that and release it over to the property owner.
So the escrow is actually paid by the builder?
Correct.
And it's, if you will, the builder's money?
Yes.
Okay, so not hearing the other side, sorry. We really can't release it, otherwise we might be liable, is that accurate?
Correct, I mean, the builder might say that you shouldn't have released it because they did the work, or that, you know, the work, property owner didn't do the work correctly. I mean, there just could be, the city would be right in the middle of the dispute.
Okay.
I mean, the other option would be the city could do the work and pay itself with the money. But I don't know if that would exceed the five thousand dollars. And then you have the issue of.
Who pays it?
Well, the city would pay for that, and then it might be over five thousand, and then the city's responsible for that. And then also, what if the work isn't done correctly, or the property owner doesn't like how that work was done, and then all of a sudden now it's the city that's responsible.
Okay.
And I don't think the city wants to take on that unnecessary liability if it doesn't have to, since this is a responsibility of the builder.
Is the builder, okay, so.
So my question would be very simply, that there seem to have been some responsibility of the city because they took the escrow to begin with.
Well, I'm not going to, Ms. Myers.
So my question is, I mean, it looks like I'm going to have to hire a lawyer, just like my neighbors did?
Yeah, probably.
If I may, Madam Mayor and Council, so the escrow we took was not for lot improvements, that the escrow we took is our standard policy and procedure for issuing temporary COs. What's being referenced here in city code is very specific to lot improvements at the time of issuing a permanent certificate of occupancy. That's when we engage with the city engineer and we come up with a dollar amount to determine what is left via lot improvements to be done. And we then take that money from the builder and hold that in escrow to hold them to that. So this, we did, we do not have that situation here. This is, again, back to our standard temporary certificate of occupancy is five thousand dollars. It depends upon the time of the year, but we're, per our fee schedule. So I would say that that situation here per city code is not at play in terms of lot improvements and using that escrow money in this situation.
I think my final question would simply be, I can't sell my house. I have a temporary certificate of occupancy that I seem to have to hire a lawyer.
Wait, yeah, I'm going to ask, thank you, Ms. Meyer, we're not, we're not here to debate with you. We understand that, we understand you have a predicament. I think the council needs to understand what the next steps are going to be for the city. So I would like to ask that you please sit down, and we're going to figure out what the council would like to direct staff to do, so.
Can we add it to a work session so we can find out how to get them a certificate of occupancy?
We can work with our engineer to come up with a solution in terms of what from this, the three-to-one slope on each side. As she mentioned, is it, what we've done before is we can come up with non-maintainable surfaces there. You know, we can work with them and the engineer to get them a permanent CO. It might not be to what exactly they want it to look like, but we can get it to a point, we can work with the engineer to get them a permanent CO if they were to want to sell their house.
So do you want to bring that back to a work session? How do you, or do you just want to work with the applicant and the engineer to kind of figure that out? Where would you like to go?
And how long, like, can you work with the engineer and the applicant and then get back to us with the update? Or do you want to go to a work session, we can, you can present options? Like, what's the next step to keep it moving forward? Not to put you on the spot, though.
I tell you what, that's correct. This is what we're going to do. You think about it, okay? And then talk with our city administrator, who is not here tonight, and then maybe bring it back to council either next work session or the following work session. And just give us an update and tell us what you think can be done or what the next step should be.
The city administrator wasn't included on all of the counts.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Meyer, can you tell me how much the cost was that you submitted?
It obviously is one bid, and that was fourteen thousand dollars.
Thank you. And obviously, this is an issue between the builder and the homeowner and not the city. I mean, it's not a city's responsibility to fix the builder's issue, so.
The city's fault, if I can answer it.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, okay, thank you very much. And then just keep, we'll, we'll let you know what we're going to do here, sorry. We have two other people signed up, but I've already spoken with you. So one is on our consent agenda and the other is a issue, or we'll be talking about the business items. So with that, we will move on to consent agenda items. And they are, we have A through K. A is approve our city council meeting minutes from June seventeenth, 2024. B is approve our work session meeting minutes from June seventeenth, 2024. C is a resolution to approve claims. D is a resolution to approve the election judge appointments for the 2024 primary and general election. And you have at your desk the new list. And then I believe it's every, yes.
You might just have it on.
Okay, sorry, it's everybody.
It's in your new cabinet, your folder.
It's in, it's in the folder, but it's everybody that was there. I think there were maybe one or two people that were on it that should not have been on it, that did not sign up. And then, do you want me to read the names? Okay, all right. Then, the next is approve our setback variance at eighty-eight oh five Indian Hill Road. F is approve the establishing, establishing a committee to examine the formation of a fire district. G is approve license agreement with Midco for material storage site. H is a resolution to approve the task order two for geotechnical services for Art Lot B. Did you want to pull that?
Yeah, I, there's a couple.
So we're going to pull that one.
And I want to pull B.
And which one?
The election one.
Four D.
Oh, okay, so we'll do that. And then approve joint powers agreement for the Highway Seven Safe Road Zone Grant. And J is approve the task order twelve rehab well number three. And K is approve award, award water main improvements in the Woodland Cove addition. And that really came back great, so that was good. So it's approving A, B, C.
When did K get added?
E, hold on, approve setback variance, we're doing that. F, G, we're not, we're going to pull H, approve joint powers agreement, approve task order, and then award water main improvements, that was on there. That, that came in like three hundred thousand under budget, so I don't think we want to discuss that too much.
No, I pulled the packet on Thursday, it wasn't Thursdays.
It was out in Friday morning.
All right. Do you want to pull it, is there any?
No, no, just for a telling, but I'm fine.
Okay, with those, any, any motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Vickery, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes on those items. So you're good to go, thank you. And then, so the, let's see, election judge, Ann?
Yes, supposedly the council has to receive the information on what parties.
No.
Yes.
Uh-uh.
Yes.
We, we receive, okay, yes, so we receive, we, so we can know there's, let's say there's eighteen judges. We can know that there's seven Republicans and nine, whatever, ten, whatever it is, Democrats. We are not told, and this is private information, who the election judges, what party they're affiliated with.
Well, it's okay.
Okay.
The issue is that there's five that are no affiliation.
And that, that could be, and they, they don't have to. They can say they're independent or non-affiliated.
Well, how does that keep it even, then?
Because then.
It doesn't have to be even, it's just to be both sides represented.
The list that you see doesn't have to be even. The precincts themselves have to be even. And that involves morning workers, night workers, all day workers, head judges, assistant judges. So Ann on the back end puzzled each precinct together based on your resident group list, which is eighteen Republicans, sixteen Democrats, five no affiliation. So with that, Ann put all pieces together, the precincts. You could have R head, D assistant, and then two R, two D. There's odd numbers, you can have an imbalance, but no more than that one person can be a down. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, all right, so then, any other questions?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the election judges? Well, it would be election, city staff election officials, and then the election judges absentee ballot board members as presented on your list.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin made that second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh. So then we have the geothermal, geotechnical services. So I'm going to hand that over to Ms. Folsky, is that okay?
Or Gary.
Or Gary?
Between the two of us, I think we could probably answer a question.
Okay.
I can go first, I have a question, not surprising. So when we had a meeting in June, Lisa and Jasper thought it'd be around like ten, fifteen thousand. You said it was going to be one million. It's sixty, which still seems high, so can you explain why it's sixty thousand dollars?
Do you want me to take a stab at that, Gary?
Okay, all right, thank you.
So when council typically sees geotechnical services, it's for street improvement projects where the borings are about twenty feet deep and that's all we get. This is a lot more complex because, one, we have deeper borings because we're supporting a building, and two, there are a lot of other testing, there's a lot of other testing that's being done on these samples based on what, what is proposed to be done on the site. We worked very closely with A2S to make sure that we got scope that they were comfortable with, that gave them the appropriate information for the design. So it's sticker shock in the respect of you're used to seeing geotechnical for road projects, but now we're looking at a site, at a building site, geotechnical services. So what, what you see in the, in the breakdown in the packet, I think it's page seventy-one, you're usually seeing, you know, a little bit of field services and some labs and maybe a handful of lab, whereas now we have quite a bit more in the laboratory services as far as, as testing goes for that. Because they need to, they need to test the soil and make sure that it can withhold the weight of a, of a building, which you don't typically get, you don't do that with a street. You just, you know, you look at the type of soil on it and corrections and that sort of thing, so.
And that area was originally a hole. I mean, it was pretty deep through there. So when I think developer kind of looked at it and said, hey, it's going to be a park, we got a place to get rid of fill. So we don't know what's in there for fill, I mean, so that's part of the problem. We're going to do some soil borings. We're hoping it's going to be a, you know, a good basin there, but we may end up having to put different footings in or something. That's a lot more cost because we're going to drill down. Am I wrong to say there's probably forty feet in there at least of fill at the deepest? Thirty for sure. I mean, they raised the manholes up and everything there that we have through our gravity main there. So I mean, it is pretty deep in there, so. But I mean, I'll tell anybody, hey, no water treatment plant was going to go there, so it's not on them, you know, they did what they did, so. But that's a big factor to figure out what's under there because we're looking at putting in, you know, maybe a five hundred, six hundred thousand gallon clear wells. We have enough storage on site, so.
You don't want that sinking.
A pretty good-sized tank, you know, you don't want anything moving. So I mean, we're going to have to have a lot of soil borings done there, so unfortunately, so.
Do the soils, when they have to test for the soil, what's in it, also to make sure that it doesn't corrode the concrete?
They will, they'll look at all that, I mean, they'll test all that for acidity and that stuff. What they're looking for is support, you know, what's under there. You know, is it sand-based, is it clay-based, you know, and what clay is it? Is it yellow clay?
Yeah, yeah.
Black clay, is it black dirt, you know, what's just put in there? So I mean, that's going to be the, the big determining factor. What footings are we going to have to put in? Are we going to drive some pilings here and there? Which I'm assuming we probably will in some areas, we'll have to do, put some pilings down, so. It's, it's a, it's a big undertaking, so.
The other water treatment plant out there, did that have normal soil? Do they have any issues building in the Kings Point one?
I, well, they had a little smumpy area on the other side. I know they did a lot of excavation on the, what would be, if you're looking at on the west side, on the south side there. It's still really wet in that area, but that is where the detention tank and stuff went. So they were able to dig down and utilize that spot, so it's very wet in there. I mean, they can hardly mow in the back and stuff, so. But yeah, there was excavation there too, you know, so. They've tried to, I mean, they really fit a lot into a little bitty site there to try to make that work. That's why it's so close to the road. You know, we tried to set it back farther at that time, but it is so tight in there. It's, there's not a lot of areas, so.
Right, but the soil itself was fine.
The soil itself was good, yeah. There's not, you know, everything around there, because everything was, you know, pretty much embedded new, you know, in there. Because the lines were already in for the raw water mains that were already put in. That was all embedded in sand coming up, so that was all in place and then ready to go. So most of it there, the only thing I think that was the biggest factor was getting the piping from there to the new tower had to be redone. We had to add some valves in there, so all that got redone. So we know that's, you know, that all encased in sand too, so.
Does this include like the subs, or is, or like a, is this, I guess, yeah, just on the proposal, is this like for Abra-Ninter Tech and stuff too, or is this just WSB's work?
So it's WSB's work, and it includes the geotechnical services that Abra-Ninter Tech would provide.
Okay, that's what I.
It's all the testing and all the results and the reports and.
I was just, I had pulled up like from 2015 when we did the, the water treatment plants in the south and the north.
We had Braun do the work, the technical services.
Just sort of looking at the comparable fees, and obviously the costs are higher in 2024 than 2015. One versus, I was trying to see.
What did Braun, what was the, I thought it was like thirty, forty thousand?
So it looks like Braun for the water treatment plants back in the day was about nineteen thousand. You know, obviously, you know, nine years ago or whatever. And then I think, you know, SEH's fee was about thirteen thousand. So I guess the proposal back then would have been in the thirty thousand dollar range. And so whether sixty in this day is right, I mean, it's probably in the ballpark at least.
Yeah, 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 it would be.
So then, this is going to take thirty days and then another thirty days, so sixty days, give or take. What is this due to delaying all of the building and planning of the treatment plant now? And then I guess to that point, why wasn't this brought up and put on agenda item back in April or May or, you know, March?
Yeah, I wish Aaron was here to speak about that, we talked about that. We're still going to be going through the design phase, we're, you know, we're trying to, you know, looking at what we have, what we're going to do, the wells first and foremost. Once they get in, then they'll really dive into it, but we'll have our layout and our design set. So what's underneath there then, once we get that, you know, then they can look at what's going to go where, and, you know, they'll finish up with, you know, for substructure there. But, you know, the interior, the outside, what the structure is, what the design is, how the layout's going to be, what the size of the concrete detention tanks are going to be, that'll all be set and then, you know.
They can be working on that right now, right?
They'll be working on all that, yep. And then once they get the results back, they'll know what they'll have to do.
What the foundation.
Subbase work and dirt work, so.
Well, what happens if this comes back and it's horrible? We have to find a new site?
No.
We'll find a new site, no, then you'll put footings, you'll probably just put pilings in down to, you know, decent soil, similar to what they do to the rock, with the water tower.
Well.
The water tower didn't have very good soil, they.
Public Works garage, they had to do that with the Public Works garage.
The water tower too, they put a, basically they put rock pilings down. So I mean, they'll, you know, they'll shore it up, make it work, I mean, there's, you know.
Eventually they hit rock.
Yeah, you know, like I say, I mean, it's just basically what we're worried about is that upper soil and, you know, and, you know, what they put in there and stuff. You know, once below, once they get done.
They put all the stuff they dug out from my home, and now to tell you, it's a whole bunch of clay.
Yeah, which is, which is better than anything, you know, I mean, at least it's, you know, if it's solid, good, compatible, you know, they can work with that, so.
Madam Mayor, if I can also give a little bit of the time, the timeframe for this. So when we first started looking at the fee and bringing this to the council, you know, over a month ago, we were, between A2S and WSB, what we were, the original scope of this proposal, the fee was, A2S was not happy with the fee. And so we, that's when we went and did, there were a lot of discussions back and forth to make sure that the scope was, was appropriate. So the scope was, was shifted based on conversations between A2S and our geotechnical director to make sure that not only are, that they're getting the right amount of information, but not too much, you know, that, that we weren't overestimating based on that original proposal. So as far as the conversation of, you know, is this waiting for the geotechnical, is that going to delay the design? And in, in conversation with the A2S, that they can start doing, it's a parallel track. They can do some of the design work. And the conversation I had with them is if, you know, if the drillers are out there and they see something that's a red flag, that's when we need to know about it. And so we'll certainly, we'll certainly do that, but there's a concurrent process that can go on here. The other part that they said that was critical was to do the survey work. The other part that they said that was critical was to do the survey work. And so we got some administrative approvals, that was within the administrative approval for staff to provide. And so we went ahead and did those services to get A2S the information they needed to proceed with their design. So we've been working with them to keep this on track as best possible, but not presenting a proposal that was for geotechnical that was beyond what would be necessary for the site after having those conversations.
So something was approved in the last 30 days?
Just the survey.
The survey.
How much was that?
Probably about...
We went to, I need to, it was within Jasper's sign-off.
It should have been under 10,000. I assume it was, right?
I think it was nine. Somewhere in that neighborhood. I apologize, I don't have that number off the top of my head. But that was one, that was an item that we were looking at getting, moving to move forward so that they could keep going, that's all.
All right.
And A2S did send this out to some other firms.
Yeah, they did.
So they did. One of them I know was Team AET, but they were not certain they could get the scope back in time. Obviously, through some of the emails they sent it to, you know, and stuff. So they did send it to other people, but with the time constraints was where people were running, where they were running into this stuff, you know, even Braun InterTech did the complete thing too and, you know.
They were higher, weren't they?
They were higher. They're still doing the testing part, but the other stuff was a little higher. So, yeah, I mean, and honestly, when the first one came back, WSB was really high too. They did go through, they sat down, they went through, they eliminated everything they didn't need out of it and brought it way down. So they did chop it up a little bit and got rid of the unnecessary stuff they didn't need that were, they were duplicating, so, you know, to do, so.
Jasper's surveying was a little over 40.
Yeah.
Good for those under five.
Yeah. That makes more sense.
I guess my only other question is why we waited so long to do this or back and forth with A2S about what specifically we wanted? I mean, we've been talking about this site for months and knew, I would assume they knew or someone should have known that we needed to test the site.
I couldn't hear you. What was it? I mean...
Why did we wait so long? Why wasn't, why wasn't this brought up in February, March?
Oh, it's been brought up. They know it's, they know the fill is bad. I mean, whether they know it, I mean, so.
They don't know it's bad. They know that there's fill there.
Well, it's fill.
I guess I don't know why.
You know, I think in the grand scope, things were finally to the point where we needed this with the, starting with the design. So I mean, the design stuff just got approved for that plant. So now we need, you know, to get this all incorporated, I think it's all part of that. So, I mean, I don't, I'm not too worried. I think we'll have plenty of time to get everything done, so.
But Gary, don't they, or maybe Allison, don't they generally do these kind of at the same time?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, and then, like you said, the design is worked on, but it's the structural supports that, that you're kind of looking into at the same time and then you figure, because you almost have to do the design first. It's kind of chicken before the egg before you can determine what the support is going to be.
Well, and we're on size constraint there too, so that's what we're looking at. What can we fit in there? How is it going to go? What's it going to fit? What are the sizes?
Right.
How deep are we going with our tanks and stuff like that?
Right.
So, you know, we're trying to make this footprint as small as possible, yet as roomy as possible inside, which sounds corny, but if you walk through ours, you trip over stuff. We've kind of toured a few that were built, one by SEH, one by Bolton and Make. Two of them were A2S. One thing we noticed, there's a lot of nice room in there. You can walk around, you can maneuver and stuff without tripping over stuff. So we're kind of looking at that too, you know, what are we going to do for that? So that's the part of this whole planning stage. So once we kind of look at what we've got and what we're going to need, clear well tank size, you know, what are we going to do with that? Where's it going to go? Where's it going to line? We need kind of all, you know, now, you know, okay, here's where it is, have that geotech information. Hey, now we're going to swing it over this way. Let's turn the building a little bit, set it here. The building they show on the page, you know, for when they're doing this pickleball court, it shows that they're, it's just a place setter. I mean, we could be swinging it 90 degrees, 180 degrees, could be moving it over 20 feet. So, you know, it's, you know, it'll all, within, by the time they get their information to them and they get, you know, everything done and in, they'll be far enough along, I don't see an issue with it. So I'm liking what I'm seeing with the designs that they're coming up with. We've already got some layouts for floor plans and stuff, so.
Right. Depending on the survey, they're not useless, but they could be completely wrong, so it just...
No.
No, the survey.
The whole thing will stay the same.
No, the survey.
The footprint won't change. Because once that is, it's just where's it going to go on that site?
So that's why they needed the survey?
Yes.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah, the work they're doing now, what we're looking at and what we're kind of determining will be in there, so. Nothing's going to, I mean, that's the layout. It's going to be plant, tanks on both sides. I mean, the general layout is there, so.
Well, we want to move forward...
I agree. Like I said, I brought that up months ago too. It's a big fill site, you know, start, you know, looking at it, so. They are, but.
I guess my point is, I would have preferred if it would have been looked at and done, you know, 90 days ago or at least brought before council, 90 plus days ago.
As long as it doesn't hold us up or hold us back, that's, then I'm okay. But I agree.
We're going to have more problem with the DNR right now. That's my major concern. So I'm not worried about this plan. I'm worried about the DNR and getting stuff approved, so.
Okay, with the wells?
With the wells?
So it's, it's...
Okay. All right.
It's not, it's not an easy process, so.
Yeah.
Let's just put it that way. They're being very difficult with us. So it's, yeah. This is the least of my concerns right now. If they don't get wells, you might as well just plank their ass. So I'll be honest.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, now I have more questions going on with the DNR.
Test wells, monitoring wells, what they want. They're adding another one. So obviously they didn't read their paperwork they, A2S sent in, so they didn't, we didn't realize you were going in the Jordan.
Do we have one in the Jordan?
Our main one's going to be the Jordan, not the Florida.
No, I mean, currently, do we have one in the, in the...
No.
Okay. So we don't have, they want us to do a test well in the...
Now they're going to add a fourth test, uh, fourth monitoring well.
Who do we talk to?
We are. Joe Richter. It's a battle. So I'm, actually, I've got some emails. They were, they want more information. So we're trying to give our well five and our well four to them for monitoring wells. And now they need to know what, how they were constructed to see if it's even feasible. Now they're going to probably add, they want another one in the TCW. They want one now, maybe in the Jordan, so. Yeah. It's, you know, and I...
And are they going to pay for it?
When is that going to be on a, updated works?
I tell you what.
Well, we'll know.
I tell you what. Let's do this. Let's, let's do this. This is a whole nother... Let's get the geotechnical services.
You'll know the whole battle's coming up, so.
And, and maybe you can update us at a, at the next work session regarding the well?
That'd be fine, yeah. We'll know more here as they're finally moving along here, so.
Okay.
Victoria's got the problems with her. Every, every city that's drilling wells is having this issue with it.
Okay.
They don't want, they don't want water done in their aquifers, so.
Well, okay. So with that, any other questions? And if not, do I have a motion to approve task order number two for the geotechnical services for Outlet B in Woodland Cove 11th?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Any further questions, please? None? No, just kidding. Any further?
It's not long. It takes about an hour.
It's okay. It's okay. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes 5-0. And I believe we've done all the consent agenda items. So we don't have any public hearings, so we'll move on to business items. And our one and only business item is a discussion of ordinance number 490, doing an interim use in the staged development district. So I'm going to hand it over to David.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. As stated, we did receive a land use request to amend city code to allow for interim uses in the staged development district. Currently, we do not allow interim uses in those districts. They are right now currently only allowed in the ag and the ag preserve district. The applicant, the reason for this request is they wish to operate a baseball and softball training facility for the property that they own at Minatrista at 6900 County Road 110 West. And as I said, that property is a zone staged development district. Currently, how the property is set up and given what they're proposing to use the site for, it does not fall under a permitted or conditionally permitted use in that staged development district. So staff suggested to the property owners to ask for this code text amendment to allow for that staged, to allow for that interim use in the staged development district. As the council is aware, interim uses run with the owner of the property and a conditional use permit runs with the property itself. So we certainly know and have talked here in recently about the differences between conditional uses and interim uses. So as you can see, it does make some sense to allow for interim uses in the staged development district because the idea with that district is that at some point in the future, it will develop its staged development. So it probably makes more sense to have interim uses than it does to have conditional use, you know, uses in that district. So it certainly seems reasonable and makes sense from that aspect, given the zoning classification. So this application was made. It did go to our planning commission at their June 24th meeting. They did hold a public hearing for this request. There was no one present to make any comments. And they did ultimately recommend approval with a 4-0 vote, unanimous vote to recommend approval of moving forward with this code text amendment. Just should note that this is just state, stage one of this process. So if this is successful tonight, if the council approves this, the next steps for the applicants then would be to go ahead and apply for that interim use. We'd hold then a public hearing with the planning commission specific to their request for their indoor softball and baseball practice facility. They would hold that hearing, make a recommendation to council, and the new council ultimately would be able to approve or deny that interim use permit. So that is not what's on the table tonight.
Right. It's just the ordinance, yeah.
Just the code ordinance and the code text amendment to allow for that, that very somewhat simple change to the staged development district, so.
Most of the staged development districts have like three, three plus acres.
Correct.
I mean, they're usually three to five or even some 10 acre parcel or more.
Correct.
So, okay. Questions? Okay? And are we in favor?
Yes.
Okay. So is there a motion then to approve? Hold on. Ordinance number 490 in, to change it, allowing interim uses in the staged development district? Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you, Ms. McGregor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? And then next, I need a motion to authorize publication of ordinance number 490 by title and summary.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Refkin. Thank you, Ms. Lacy. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. So I didn't have you speak because probably wouldn't help. So, all right. Thank you. So you're good to go for your next phase. All right. With that, we'll move on to staff reports. I'll start with Ellie.
Yeah, yep. So absentee voting is underway for the primary election. Direct balloting actually begins on July 26th. Candidate filing starts July 30th and ends August 14th at 5:00 p.m. And then obviously, election day is October 14th. So elections are going to matter, right?
Just real quick, what are sign, campaign sign, what is the timing on that? When can people put out campaign signs for local elections?
It's a great question, but I will have to answer it back to you on...
Okay. No, I just, I mean, you've already seen signs out for House and so on. And I just, I was thinking, or I thought, that you couldn't put campaign signs out, you could only do it 10 days prior to the election, but is it for?
And then get back to the other meetings?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm just, I'm sure, I'm sure they are legal. I'm not saying that. I was just curious if there was a difference between local elections and, and state elections and federal elections, so.
I mean, I'll just...
Yeah, okay.
While you guys interrupt me.
Thank you. Anything else? Jasper should be back next meeting, I believe. Okay, do we need planning?
There is no planning commission meeting this month.
Okay. No planning and no parks, I believe? Okay, no planning and no parks, I believe?
Correct.
Okay, hey.
Forty-six days before the state primary and state general election year, until ten days after.
Oh, ten days after, okay, maybe that's where I have the ten days.
Municipal ordinances may regulate the size and the number, but I don't believe we have any ordinances that are different.
That's what I meant, that's what I meant.
Yeah, I think, I think that's correct. Yeah, all right, okay. So you don't have to get back to, back to us, all right. So any other staff reports? Like I said, I think Jasper will be back with us at our August fifth meeting. Yep, um, so any, I'll start with Ms. Lacy, reports?
Oh, well, I got to go to the, um.
Pioneer Sarah Creek.
Pioneer Sarah Creek watershed meeting, um, thanks to Peter, um, updating me on what we needed to do. We passed the, um, uh, important thing that we needed, we needed, I think, twenty thousand dollars to go forward and, and work on stabilizing the Kingswood Channel ravine, so yay to that.
Yeah, all right.
And then I was at, also the planning commission where I got to meet the lovely couple that wants to do the baseball training facility and obviously the planning commission liked that idea, so that was really it. We've started painting the Gillespie Center, which looks really different and wonderful. Um, and the fundraising efforts are going extremely well, so.
Good.
And changing it to again, community center, not a senior center. And that's it.
All right.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
You don't have anything?
Anne and I attended the personnel committee meeting after the last meeting. We discussed a few new positions and I'm assuming that will be brought up with budget discussions.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Um, and then Lisa and I have attended two of the fire district meetings and then we have our next one on the twenty third.
No, two.
February twenty, the twenty third.
Yes, okay, yes.
Seven A M.
I know, yeah, that's why I forgot about it, I'm just kidding, yeah.
We had representatives from the fire marshal service there, um, and we formally asked for their assistance with the process and so they're walking us through step by step.
Yeah.
Very slowly.
And we've kind of encouraged them to move a little faster.
That's why my update is so short compared to my usual ones. I have nothing new to report other than we formally asked for their assistance. So you can guess what that's like for me?
And, and we, no, um, we did talk to the chief and we kind of implied that we would like this to move along a little bit faster. We don't need to regurgitate everything all the time. I mean, just come on, we talked about this, now next step, now next step. So we'll see what we can do. Um, Jasper and Kathleen and I are all on the same page there, so.
We're definitely have ones when we get slowly.
So, yeah, so, uh, I attended that meeting, of, those meetings, of course, and then, um, also the, um, annual L M C conference. It was very interesting and, um, lots of, lots of networking, lots of people, um, and talking to other mayors too, so. Um, getting different ideas and, and, yeah, that's not always a good thing, right? I would come back from these conferences and staff would say, don't tell us, don't tell us. But, um, no, good stuff. And I also, um, ran into, um, Eller's Todd, or.
Todd Hagan.
Todd Hagan, talked, talked to him a little bit about our, our financial situation and that kind of thing. So there's one thing I was gonna ask you, so what, what is it called? I think I, um, the bonds that you can float, um, up to ten million, you can do up to ten million?
They're, um, bank qualified or?
No, 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 they're called, um, I, I text, I texted Jasper as soon as I talked to Todd about it because I thought if we don't do ten million worth of bonds this year, we could do those type of bonds and you get money for them. It, it's no, it's, it's no risk to us.
We're, if we're not gonna use our ten million in a year, you can do.
You can do a, um.
Yeah, I know, um, the term's slipping my mind right now, but basically you can almost, uh.
It's like you basically are.
Con, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, a conduit bond, so, thank you, Sarah, a conduit bond.
Good job.
And so anyhow, I, I'd really like to bring back some information on that as soon as possible because I know we're not gonna do ten million in bonding this year.
Well, I think we'll, we'll be talking with councils about it. I mean, we know we have the, the well projects, I know, I know the, I know the timelines, you know, what may have twenty, twenty twenty-five, they have to have it done and then we got the, the water main and we might have an equipment, I mean, there could be some things that probably not the full ten million, but there could be some things that we still could be bonding for later in the latter half of this year.
That's fine, but, um, so you can, you don't, you don't have to do the full ten million in conduit bonds. You can do five million or you can do six million. But what I'm saying is you can't bond, if you already bond for, let's say, five million, you can't bond for the ten million. You can bond for ten million of conduit bonds, um, total. But if you already have five million that you're bonding for, for your projects, then you can only bond for five million. So I wanna talk about that because we get money for those.
We get a little bit of a, almost just a premium fee or something, so. And we haven't really talked about that are doing that here before. I know some cities have where it'll be like, uh, some, yeah.
And you have, it's, we'll talk about it at a work session, but basically people buy the, are, usually builders. People that are doing big projects will buy those bonds from you. And so, but there's no, there's really no risk to the city. It's very, very low risk to the city or no risk, I think, yeah. They're basically using you as a conduit, so, all right.
I'm sure Brian agrees with you, Brian's willing to make you funny.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's fine, I mean, there is definitely probably some administrative work and so it's a more, is it worth it to forget? What, you know, can you get a percent or a quarter of a percent, probably a quarter percent, I shouldn't say a full percent, but so, you know, can you get twenty, thirty thousand, fifty thousand for, you know, depending if it's up to, you know, five million or something, um. I, yeah, I'd wanna hear more about it and look and talk to Todd.
I just wanna find, get more information on it.
So like the next work session?
We, good, I guess, or one of these.
Yeah, if you could, I mean, because if we're gonna do it, then we wanna kind of get on the.
I mean, it's August.
Yeah, all right.
Well, it depends what projects are out there and obviously sometimes it's gonna be, does the city wanna be a part of this project? You know, you're, there can be variables.
Okay, well, and maybe Sarah can help you bring back that information to. You have it all, I know, thank you, I figured you did.
Oh.
Yeah, I know a lot of cities do it, so, all right. Um, that's all I have for right now, I won't bring back any more information. So with that, um, we can be adjourned if there is a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Rafkin, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. McGregor, I was gonna say Ms. Ann. All right, all those in favor signify with aye. Aye, all those opposed, motion passes five oh, we are adjourned.
We're adjourned.